I call to order this meeting of the Gladstone City Council for Tuesday, August 8th, 2023 at 6:30 PM. The city of Gladstone is abiding by guidelines set forth in House Bill 2560, which requires the governing body of the public body, to the extent reasonably possible, to make all meetings accessible remotely through technological means and provide opportunity for members of the general public to remotely submit oral and written testimony during meetings, to the extent in-person oral and written testimony is allowed. Therefore, this meeting will be open to the public both in person and virtually using the Zoom platform. The Zoom instructions are printed on the agenda. If you are here in person, you don't need the Zoom instructions. And if you're watching by Zoom, I hope you already have found those instructions because otherwise you wouldn't be hearing me right now. If members of the public would like to comment on an agenda item, either virtually or in person, please email your comments to the city recorder prior to noon today. Individuals attending in person may submit a speaker card, which is on the table in the entrance to the room, to the city recorder, Tammy Bannock over here, prior to the beginning of the meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes. The city council will also have Gladstone City event announcements during the meeting and business from the audience at the end of the meeting. To speak during either time, virtually or in person, once again, you should have made arrangements prior to noon today or fill out the card this evening. Tammy Bannock, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Huckabee.
Present.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Rieckel.
Present.
Counselor Cook.
Present.
Counselor Roberts.
Present.
Counselor Garlington.
Present.
Mayor Milch.
Present. We'll begin the meeting with a land acknowledgement, followed by the flag salute. We gratefully acknowledge the Clackamas, Chinook, and Kalapulia Native Peoples on whose ancestral homelands we gather. We honor them as a vibrant, foundational, and integral part of our community. We recognize their accomplishments as the native stewards of these lands, as well as the diverse and vibrant native communities who make their home here today. We thank those who have connection to this land and serve as stewards, working to ensure our ecosystem stays balanced and healthy. Without a full representation of everyone's experience, we will never be able to design and develop a better future. Please stand for the flag salute. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jackie, do we have any additions to the agenda?
I have nothing, Mayor, thank you.
All right. The agenda, we start with our consent agenda, which includes minutes and budget-related, financial-related reports, including consideration of a grant from the Oregon Impact Oregon Department of Transportation in the amount of $36,000 for high-visibility enforcement in the Gladstone Police Department. And as we do every month, our department head monthly reports are included in that first agenda for the month, and I commend them to you. It's a good way to learn about what's happening at all levels of city staff and government. Later, we'll have our report from the Clackamas Fire District. We have a recognition of a group that did some service in our community this year. We will meet a new staff member, and then we'll have our city event announcements and move on to the regular agenda, and I'll go over those items when we get to that point in the meeting. All right, the first item is the consent agenda. Items one through seven, does anyone on the council want to make a change, a correction, pull an item out, or are we ready to adopt the consent agenda? I'll entertain a motion if we are.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, Counselor Alexander moved, and Counselor Huckabee seconded that we approved the consent agenda as presented in the meeting agenda. Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Rieckel.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, the consent agenda is approved unanimously. Our next item is our report from Clackamas Fire District.
Thank you for the time this evening. Brian Stewart, Assistant Chief of Clackamas Fire. I'll take just a couple minutes, and I'm going to turn it over to our fire marshal to share a little bit of a different perspective of what we've been doing within Gladstone and within the fire district. But I'd like to start and just recognize the wire duty death of Benjamin Sapper. He died on Friday on a wildland incident in the state. He was a federal firefighter, and it's a loss. But with that, it reminded me of a, and the timing was kind of coincidental, of an incident in Dutch Creek back in 2008. We lost a firefighter, the nation's fire service did, Andy Palmer, who had been struck by a tree, potentially survivable injuries, but it took seven hours to get him extricated off that hillside, and he didn't have the medical care to sustain or survive those injuries. So we have changed some things within how we do business, but one of the things that we've changed is we've added rapid extrication modules, sometimes on wildland fires, which is specially trained tech rescue individuals, rope rescue individuals, and I have wildland training as well, to go out and rescue individuals that get injured. And two of our members, Dan Olson, our operations chief, and Kyle Olson, our training chief, are out on assignment on one of those modules today, to make sure when accidents do happen, we give everybody the best chance of surviving those. With that, it was a lot of fun on Saturday. I had a good time. It was great seeing several of you out there. Chief Schmuber ducked off the pedestal before I had a chance to throw a ball at him. But that's all right, I got Chief Huffman with the first throw on the switch over. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sean.
Perfect. Well, good evening, everybody. Sean Olson, Fire Marshal for Clackamas Fire. I just want to say, it's definitely a pleasure to be back in Gladstone. I served in Gladstone for many years as a volunteer, and so has my family. So definitely an honor for me to be back here and within this capacity. So thank you so much. I'll just provide some, a few updates of what we've been doing over the last, this last year in the Fire Marshal's office, one of which, we've had seven fire investigations within the city, we've had 38 total fires within the city, but that can relate down to even your simplest of bark dust fires. So, but from my office, we've investigated seven fires, and with seems to be a common theme of electrical-related origins and cause, so seems to be kind of the uptick right now. You've probably noticed and heard quite a few fires around the county, not just within Gladstone, but a lot of brush fires that seem to be sparking up from careless cigarettes, anybody throwing out anything out the window into a bark dust or tall grass related. Weather right now is very volatile. It's very dry, very hot, and with gusty winds, so it's not a good combination right now. So, and looking at this next weekend, and we're going to be shaping up to be even worse. So just be cognizant of what we're doing. I'm having staff right now, we've been doing high-risk occupancies, which is our multifamily apartment complexes. In our world, multifamily is our highest risk, and it's where we've seen a lot of fires, because you're only as safe as your, as neighbor above you or below you. So we do see quite a few fires in apartment complexes, so that was been the goal, to try to target those, and make sure that we have adequate access, there's adequate addressing, fire hydrants are working and flowing as they should, fire alarm systems are tested annually, so that's what we're out doing right now. We've done about 35 apartment complexes. They do take a little bit of time, because it does take probably the most time is for the reinspection of it and to gain compliance. So with the enforcement side of it, our biggest aspect of that is, one, is making sure that the occupants are safe, and that we are working with businesses and we're working with apartments, because sometimes there is an economical impact to that, so we want to be cognizant of that, but putting fire life safety at the highest priority. This next fall, we'll be looking at conducting school inspections again, which we typically do annually, just in line with all the other inspections that we do across the district, so Gladstone is no different. And you guys follow the same priority rating as we do in the rest of the district, so we're on kind of lockstep with that. So we'll be inspecting Gladstone schools here probably in September, and then with some follow-up inspections in, hopefully by December, to make sure there's compliance. We were very successful last year, and success to me is, we've identified a fire code violation, we work with the schools, they remediate it immediately, and it's, it has good outcomes. Let's see, community events, again, I concur with what Chief Stewart just mentioned about Saturday. I was not able to attend, but it sounds like it was a very successful event and very, very well-turned-out, turnout of people. I was talking with Denny, Denny was there, and it sounded like he was, seemed to be a little bit of the life of the party with the wheel of fire prevention, so he sounds like he had a lot of fun and made good impacts. National Night Out was last Tuesday, myself, Chief Stewart, and Deputy Fire Marshal Carrie Shanklin, and the police department showed up for a neighborhood event, which, I apologize, I forgot his name, but they have amazing food, and very friendly, super-nice family, so I was glad to be a part of that again. And then lastly, we're also working on a program called Entera. It's a GIS mapping program, which allows us to overlay certain icons for our pre-fire planning. And when we lay those icons on the GIS, we have instant access for operations staff to see where certain key features are of a particular commercial building. So like your fire alarm systems, your fire sprinkler systems, your control valves to shut those systems down, your fire hydrants. So within Gladstone, that's what we're going to be working on this fall and making sure that Gladstone and all the commercial businesses here are integrated into Entera, so when we have a full implementation of Entera come January 1st across the district. So that will help the crews out immensely with emergency response. So that is all I have to report. So you guys have any questions for me?
All right, any questions, councilors? Counselor Rieckel, did you have your hand up?
I do, I just was going to ask, sorry. It never ends, does it? On your, on your report, I just noticed that there was mention of a new program, the defensible space debris. Can you kind of clarify what constitutes defensible space debris?
I can. Defensible space really has a lot to do with like the vegetation around our home, trees around our home. It does put a lot more focus on more of the rural communities, where we have much higher risk of the wildland-urban interface and potential threats for wildfire, not so much in the urban areas, but you know, the threat is still there, and it's always encouraged just for citizens to prepare their home. So things like removing light duff materials such as pine needles, leaves, cleaning the gutters, keeping your valleys clean of your roof lines, especially if you have like a wood shake roofs, keeping all that material cleaned up. So it's kind of really what that really entails with that when we're talking about defensible space.
Okay, cool, thank you for the clarification. I was like, what exactly does that constitute? So I appreciate it, thank you.
Welcome.
So does the cat.
Are you able to speak about the Barbary, the cause of the Barbary Cove?
Sure.
Okay, sure. There are a lot of stories, just want to get it.
Oh yeah, oh yeah. That one is looking at like it's another, again, an electrical-related issue, potentially targeting towards the hot tub. So, and it's kind of where, and I don't know the 100% the circumstances, but my experiences with any type of electrical, it's the biggest part to that, is just making sure that if we do do electrical, we're pulling the proper permitings and hiring electricians to actually do the work. So not to say that that's not the case in this circumstance, but it definitely lessens the chances of a potential fire, so.
And it was a total loss, or no?
No, honestly, I didn't hear the total dollar loss, but I believe the fire did make it into the interior, which dramatically increases the loss, so.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, welcome.
For people that aren't aware, this was a residential fire a couple of nights ago here in Gladstone, one of the neighborhoods near Webster Road, or Oatfield, Barbary Court or Place, one of those, yeah.
Yep.
All right. Well, thank you for the quick response to that. We always know it could be worse if you don't get there quickly.
Don't send them away yet.
Oh no.
Regarding the electrical fires, you said in your investigations, I'm wondering, you know, a lot of buildings in Gladstone are old, antique, we'll call them antique. Are you finding a lot of the fires are because of outdated wiring?
No.
No?
Nope. Nope, surprisingly, no. Even if it was like your old knob and tube wiring, it was still installed under a certain electrical code back in the day. So, no, actually, it's, it's more of when we intervene ourselves as homeowners, and we start doing our own thing, and all of a sudden we're a licensed electrician that we saw on YouTube. Yeah, that's sometimes where we run into trouble, but honestly, right now, is we're seeing a lot of the fires caused by cigarette smoking, or throwing some type of a hot device out onto their bark dust, light vegetation, and this time of year is super busy with that stuff, so.
Yeah. And then the second thing, I just wanted to give kudos on the report, something I really liked this month, is this, it's a table up here, maybe you can actually confirm what these mean. There's a red and green draft unlocked boxes. Be aware of what I'm referring to in the report?
I apologize, I can't. Oh, sure.
There you go. Yeah, I'm not sure what the verbiage means. Draft unlocked.
Yes. That's from our ESO, so that's our incident reporting system that we use across the district. So that just shows specific to what fire reports have been completed and locked, and what's just still pending.
Okay, that's great. It's super handy. I know, I don't think there's residential ones on here, but this is great information for us to be able to push out into the community, say like, these are the fire hazards we're experiencing, and there's a clear uptick in what we can see here, brush grass, vegetation fires. So I really like this part of the report this month, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Garlington.
I'm wondering, what is the, what is the, oh my gosh, I totally lost the word. How is it you go about doing the fire testing? Do you let the residential, whoever's running the residence, or when it comes to apartments and condominium units and things like that, how do you go about that? And how is it that you get the, I mean, do you, do you give the people who own the building or run the building ample time to fix it before you come out? Or do you generally show up and say, you got a problem? Oh.
Yeah, so our, our true authority only lies within common areas and the exterior of the buildings. Any private residence is governed by, we're exempt from that. So we have no authority within the private residence of an apartment, but on the exterior part of it, like our private fire hydrants or our public fire hydrants, the fire alarm systems, any of the life safety systems that are managed by the property manager, we make sure that they're testing those systems appropriately and making sure they're functioning as they were designed to do. So if we do come across like a significant violation, like say the fire alarm system is totally demolished, or not even in place, or doesn't have all the components, because they've been removed over the years, we give them time. We, we'll put them on a fire watch notice, because once we've identified it, now we have to follow through with it and make sure that something, that those systems are fixed and brought up to code as quickly as possible. So it puts the ownership onto the property manager to make sure that their occupants are safe, now that we've identified it, and then we give them time, because nowadays it does take a little bit more time to get a repair technician, licensed electrician to get out there and fix these systems. So it really all depends on how soon they can get out, how quickly they can get it fixed, and get the system tested and back up and running. So, but we do provide an okay amount of time, but when it comes to fire life safety, the life safety part is 100% number one, and we've got to jump on it and get it done. So we try to express that to the property managers and express how important it is to them, for them and for us, to get that stuff done.
Okay, and then my second question is, for people who need the help, they don't have a working smoke alarm, they don't have a working, the other one that we have in our house, that one, yeah, my husband, how do people get help? How do they reach out and get help to have that installed in their home, or maybe they just need a new battery, and?
We do offer that, we do offer that service to a certain extent. We are a little strapped for staffing, and we, we offer it and we come install when we, when we absolutely have to, and we'll have the fire crews help us out from our office as well, and we kind of tag-team it and divide and conquer that. We don't get that many requests, but when they do come, we do go out and help out and install if we need to. If it's like a multifamily apartment complex, then it's property owner's responsibility and property management companies to do it.
Okay.
Yep, but private residents, when we do get the requests, and they're not very frequent, but when we do, we go out and help and, and provide a smoke alarm where needed, one or two, if they don't have them at all, and if none are, none are installed, but we don't leave the home without not installing a working smoke alarm.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to thank you guys for the further detailing, like Counselor Huckabee was saying, reading through this report, there's a lot more information, and so, you know, that was exciting to see, not exciting, but it was interesting to see what was going on in the community with a, with a further element of detailing. So thank you for that, and you know, I always like hearing when you guys talk about the preventative maintenance you do in the community, and so when you guys talk about that, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Man, we've all got something for you tonight. So I attended the community festival, I saw you there, with my pack of children, my own and, you know, friends' children's, and gosh, I gotta say, the fire booth that you guys had was by far the most engaging. You said it was Denny was your representative? It is, it takes a special talent to be able to talk to kids at all, but to talk to them about such a dry subject as safety, and like get an engaged response, and like have an impact, like really talented community engagement there, thank you so much.
Thank you. I'll pass that on to them.
Well, I'll just echo what others have said, you know, it's always helpful to hear about the prevention work and the preparation work. You know, you can't sit around the fire station and then go to a building you've never been before and expect to be able to address a fire there. You have to know, you know, where the equipment is, where the hydrants are, what kind of ladders you're going to need, all of that. And that's where a lot of the work comes in. If you were just out fighting fires, didn't have time to do that, you wouldn't get much done, you wouldn't be very effective. But I'm glad you put that effort in, extricating people from dangerous situations, you know, that kind of preparation in advance is what saves lives and saves property. So we're grateful to you for a good, healthy report, and for your continued positive engagement in the community. We're grateful to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a great evening.
Next item is a recognition. Staff, would you like to introduce this?
Sure, let's continue with that theme of gratitude, because we are very grateful to have guests tonight here from the Seventh Day Adventist Gladstone Park Conference Center. Benjamin approached the city and the mayor a few months ago to talk about their Community Day of Giving. It actually turned into a few days at the end of July, and we outlined a few projects that they could work on for us, and we put together, I think, four or five slides that we would like to highlight to show you where they focused. Out at Meldrum Bar Park, the bathroom facility, as you can see, there was rotting wood on the side before there in those pictures, and after. That is the work that they did. Also, on our Meldrum Bar Park picnic shelters, they painted our posts there, and it just looks so good, so fresh. And we were able to put together a collage of those that assisted, and so I'd like, maybe Benjamin has some friends here tonight that he can introduce, and then I think the mayor would like to say a few words.
All right, if you'd like to come up, we have a microphone here at the table, if you're comfortable, Benjamin, and if you turn it on, we'll hear you, and you can introduce anyone you'd like and share any comments about your experience.
Should those I introduce?
Come up to the table, or they can?
That's fine, or they can stand, whatever they're comfortable with.
Yeah, it's an honor, counsel, to be able to share just a few words about our team, and thank you again for the opportunity, Jackie and John, for the opportunity to serve the city of Gladstone. I've called this city home for eight years, so we live in the community just off of Exeter Street, and our hope has always been that we can make it our goal to not be the best church in the community, but the best church for the community. And so we are really committed, I think, every year, growing in the way that we can serve the city of Gladstone with absolutely no strings attached, except to just make our community better. And it's our belief that when the city wins, everybody is stronger, everybody is healthier, and this community is better, it can reach more people, raise up healthier kids, and have an impact, not only in Gladstone, but a ripple effect far beyond Gladstone. So it's an honor for us to be able to partner up with the city of Gladstone. A couple introductions. On the, on the left, I'm looking back at the audience, this is Lisa and Caleb, and Caleb serves on our communication team. He has personally written in the last couple years, I think, over 800 human interest stories. So he has sat with hundreds of people and really is an expert when it comes to just retelling the stories of what it means to be human. So he works on our communications team. This is Jason Calvert, we stole him from Ohio recently, him and his beautiful family, and he is our Associate Youth Ministry Director specifically for middle school and high school ministry in Oregon and Southwest Washington. And then this is Dr. Cara, sorry, Cara Johnson, and she is our Vice President for the Adventist Church in Oregon and Southwest Washington. So we're, we've got a great team here, and so glad to have some of them here as well. So.
So while you have a local congregation in the community, this really is a statewide connectional program, and it's done, it was done in connection with the camp meetings that you have in July. And so the, the photos that we've seen of young people working, they came not just from the city here, but they came from all over, traveled here, and made an effort to be involved and help the city in this way.
They did, so our denominational network globally is a little over 22 million globally, and our area that we have the, the privilege of serving is the entire state of Oregon, and then Southwest Washington, which is a couple hundred churches, as well as close to 33 schools, faith-based schools as well. And then we have a summer camp that is near and dear to our heart, a Big Lake Youth Camp right near Hoodoo Ski Resort, so if you're ever up by the sisters area. But yeah, the young people that came, some of them were dragged by their grandparents to be here. Some, John, came for the corn dogs, you know, that are a popular item at camp meeting. But our vision, and especially with Jason and I working together, was to have young professionals mentoring high school students as they were serving the community. So we had about a third of our service crew on the day were young professionals and young adults, and then the other remaining two-thirds were all high school students. And Jackie, we took every one of the five mini projects, and we designated a leadership word for every project. And so as the mentoring was happening between young professionals and high school students, they unpacked words like integrity, and hard work, and teamwork, and then they gave four reports, the high school students did, on those terms, what that meant when it came to being an effective leader in the community, based on the conversation around each term at each one of those mini, mini projects. So, yeah, thank you, thank you so much for the opportunity.
Well, thank you, and it's glad, and we're glad to know that it was a character-building process for the young people involved as well, and something that benefit our community. Some more than others, is that what? All right, and we have a card to present to you.
Oh, you do.
Just to say thank you on our behalf, councilors, do you have comments or questions? Go ahead, Counselor Alexander.
When, I mean, I, I met with you a couple years, remember, we met a couple times, and so how long have you been doing this program for Gladstone?
As far as partnership initiatives with the community, this is our second year.
Second year.
And so we did a number of projects in this, in July of 2022. The main one was, was some exterior work with Tiffany over at the Gladstone Senior Center, repainting the fence and helping with the community garden, but this is the second year that we've used the. that we've used the attendees at camp meeting to get out in the community.
Well, we really appreciate it. This gets better each year. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Just to echo what Greg said, thank you for what you do for the community. You came up here thanking us, but it almost seems awkward that way. Thank you guys for what you've done. And for us, we, we greatly appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
All right, great.
I would just like to say thank you also. And you had me at service because that's, that's where people need to be. And you all just, it just show it. And I can see it in your faces that you love doing what you do. So thank you for being a part of Gladstone. We need you here.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We have a lot of additional items on our agenda. You are not by any means required to stay through the rest of the meeting and we will not be offended if you leave. Next, when we were doing our goal setting for the year, uh, economic development was our, one of our number one goals. And, uh, to that end, we made some staffing changes in the city and, uh, Jackie has an introduction to make.
I do. I'm very excited. Thank you, Mayor. So the city needed an experienced public involvement professional with focused expertise in economic development and community development. Someone excellent in communication and marketing skills with the ability to create a vibrant program to support, maintain and grow all businesses in Gladstone. The city interviewed six qualified candidates for the economic development tourism coordinator position. And we were pleased to announce that Marcy Jory accepted the offer of employment and she began on July sixth. Marcy most recently was the events and place making manager for the Downtown Oregon City Association. She is a motivational and purpose-driven change maker with the demonstrated history of engaging communities with integrity and strong leadership skills. She has a passionate work ethic and is creative at problem solving with a pragmatic lens of engagement. Marcy earned her bachelor's degree in psychology and social science from Portland State University and a master of science and health promotion and wellness from the California University of Pennsylvania. One of the best takeaways from her interview was her enthusiasm to create the reputation that Gladstone is a place where you want to do business. So please join me in welcoming Marcy to the Gladstone family.
Next item, uh, is our, um, town for Gladstone city event announcements or other events, uh, that would interest citizens of Gladstone. Uh, we have three minutes for each one. Um, and I know we were scheduled to have, well, uh, let's see. I see, I see Bill Preble in the audience. Bill, would you like to come up first? Oh, is, uh, Bill, if you wouldn't mind taking a seat, uh, one of our presenters is on Zoom and she's already on the screen and I'm gonna call on her first. And I, I apologize. Okay. Thanks, Bill. Um, I should have, should have turned it over to you. Sorry, uh, Danny.
First is Marta McGuire.
Marta, we see you. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Milch and counselors. My name is Marta McGuire. I serve as Metro's Waste Prevention and Environmental Services Director that oversees our garbage and recycling transfer station in Oregon City. I wanted to have the opportunity to update you on some work underway to consider improvements to our reuse recycling and garbage infrastructure in the region. Over the past year, Metro has been working with local government, industry and community partners to guide development of a new garbage and recycling system facilities plan. And this plan is really focused on assessing the region's existing facilities to identify service gaps and needs and present opportunities to invest in new facilities, including addressing the needs at our Metro South Station. I would like to extend the invite to city, uh, mayor, the city councilors, the city manager, community leaders and industry partners in the city of Gladstone to attend a symposium and workshop that we are having to discuss proposed scenarios and recommend a set of investments to modernize our system and invest in new facilities and improvements. This symposium is scheduled for Wednesday, September twenty-seventh at the Oregon Convention Center from ten AM to three PM. And I am happy to follow up with a written invitation to your emails, but I really appreciate the opportunity to come before you today and share this information. And I really hope to see you there.
Thank you, Marta. Thanks for coming. Uh, several of us attended, um, uh, sort of an introductory, uh, uh, meet and greet with a lot of officials from Metro last week. And, uh, when we heard from Marta about this coming up, uh, Counselor Garlington was bold enough to invite her to come to this part of our meeting. And I'm glad she did because, uh, we have items related to this very topic coming up on our agenda later. It's always better to get the bigger, the broader picture of this. So thank you very much, Marta. All right. And now Bill Preble, I invite you to come up to the front.
Okay. Thanks for, uh, letting us speak. My name is Bill Preble. I'm president of the Gladstone Pickleball Club and this is Donna Weir. She's the vice president of the Pickleball Club. We're not gonna come here to talk about something we're going to do. We came to talk about something that just was completed. Some of the counselors and Jackie, uh, know us from five years ago when we started this project. Uh, and in two thousand nineteen, we had our first pickleball tournament down here in conjunction with the, uh, community festival. And it's been a really great relationship. Uh, five, four years ago, five years ago, we started with seventy-eight people, players that came. Uh, we had a tournament last year. COVID kind of, um, stopped us for two years. But last year, I can't remember what we had, but this year we had a hundred, a hundred and forty-nine. And this year we had a hundred and sixty-four people show up. This is a symbiotic relationship, not we, it, it makes our tournament special. There's no other tournaments that players are not the only ones there. If you were to come down on Friday and Saturday and seen the courts ringed with people watching, that doesn't happen a lot. So we're grateful for that. Uh, and on, on our end, not only does it bring those players, but it brings their family, it brings their, uh, children. Uh, if you look at the people who came, we, they came from forty-three different cities outside of Gladstone and five states. And they all came to enjoy the festival. And I think it added to it. It, uh, we sold a lot of things and, uh, we just like to say that we're an important part of that festival and together we, we form a great partnership.
We just basically wanted to say thank you for allowing us to be a part of that because it's very important to our club. And we think that, you know, we benefit obviously, but we think the city does as well. And thank you.
If I got thirty seconds, I'd just like to reiterate what you were talking about. The fire department was right behind us in their booth and we would walk back and forth there a lot. And I was coming back and they were talking to a young man and they have a wheel. And he says, you spin this and we'll ask you a question depending on what color it was. Well, that stopped me in my track. And I said, challenge accepted. And I'm standing behind this person. So they asked a question and I just want you to know I nailed it. It was all good. It was good. But my point is that was a real interactive booth they had and I, I was glad to see it behind us. So, um, kudos to the fire department. So, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Very much.
Jackie and I were talking a little earlier this week about the, the festival and how, uh, we, we sometimes think of it as something that will draw in tourists from outside Gladstone. Well, we find that the festival itself, for the most part, is a Gladstone resident tradition and event that the locals look forward to. But it's events like this, the Pickleball Club that reaches out beyond the community that really helped to put Gladstone on the map, uh, beyond just our own city limits. So we are grateful to you for having that event, for having, uh, those connections in the broader community and for doing it in connection with our big event, uh, because it, it really connects the two very well. Other comments?
Yeah. So I, uh, I volunteered at the festival at the bounce house and I had the very first shift on the first day on Friday. And there were a lot of folks who came up asking like, is there tickets? Do I have to pay? Like they were clearly from outside the community. This was their first time in Gladstone. Um, and a lot of them told me that pickleball is what brought them, that they were here for the pickleball tournament, but then they were walking around with their families. So definitely want to back up what you were saying, like pickleball absolutely drew a lot of folks to the festival and to our community. So thank you for that partnership. It's really wonderful.
Want to add one more thing. Um, oh, uh, Council Rieckel, go ahead.
Just a quick question for, uh, Bill. I'm just curious. I know that a while back you had attended a city council meeting and you mentioned that there was the, either the potential for or an existing program for youth in the community to join the association and, and get lessons. Is that still a thing?
Maybe at the end of the year I can come by and talk about what we do, but we have a kids' club every summer. And this week it was Donna ran it actually. She should probably be up here talking about it. It was one week. Last week it was two weeks and we, kids come for free and we have a bunch of the pickleball people come there and play and help the kids. They teach them the rules. It was real successful. Um, we'll have it again next year. We also have free lessons on Friday afternoon and it was, I don't know how many people could be there this week because of the, uh, tournament, uh, and the, uh, the festival, because everybody was coming down. I wanted to learn how to play. So, um, but no, thank you for asking that. We do have kids' club every year. And kids play free. The only thing we ask is that they have their parents with them depending on what age, if they're sixteen and below. You just don't want to turn them loose with a bunch of adults in there. So.
Fair enough.
But they're, they're more than welcome to come and play and we're glad to teach them the game.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
I just add that it's great exercise because I took two lessons and went down there one time on my own. And that was that I was somewhere for too many days afterward.
You have to keep doing it, I think.
Well, speaking of that, you know, it, it, you talk about young people getting involved, but really it's something that the baby boomer generation has really, uh, glommed onto because it's been a great form of, of exercise and, uh, uh, you know, cha- taking a, a sport they may have been familiar with and played younger and transforming it into something they can do when they're not as quick and agile and all the rest. I was reading an article from the Washington Post in the, uh, in the digital section of the, of the Oregonian this past Sunday about something called walking soccer, where, uh, adults of the, of the same kind of age group that, that where pickleball has an appeal are now playing on a smaller soccer field, uh, and having to walk, not run, but having to, it's a great emphasis on accurate passing and, uh, teamwork and, and play and exercise. So, uh, that may be the next big thing that we see out at Meldrum Bar Park or in an indoor soccer, uh, facility of some kind. And, uh, and I think that, uh, uh, keeping folks active and moving and connecting with others is one of the great things that this community does. So thank you, uh, to both of you for being here tonight. All right. Uh, Tammy, do we have any other announcements that were scheduled in advance for this?
We do not, and no one has submitted a form today.
Okay.
Can I jump in, Mayor?
Yes.
I'm gonna jump on the, the front end of the meeting and the back end of the meeting, just in case we lose anybody. Just want to mention that this coming Friday, the eleventh, at six PM is Gladstone's first music on the green at the, um, Gladstone Community Center. There will be live music and just reminder to bring, um, a lawn chair and food and drinks. Um, and we hope to see everybody there on Friday night.
Thank you, Counselor Huckabee.
Yep.
All right. We move on to our regular agenda. We will have a public hearing regarding, uh, Gladstone Disposal Company solid waste rates. We have an ordinance amending the Gladstone Municipal Code, uh, to exclude roosters in the city limits. Uh, we have one appointment to make for a board commissioner committee. We will review the draft revisions of the city council rules. And, um, then we will have our closing items. So item twelve, public hearing, resolution twelve twenty-three.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, City Council. So since we're talking about the community festival, how about those choreographed Gladstone disposal garbage trucks that were in our parade on Saturday? It's great work. So I want to just give you, um, a little bit of overview. This is an item for our new council. They have not met with Will and Pam before for Gladstone Disposal. Gladstone Disposal has an exclusive franchise agreement with the city of Gladstone to provide solid waste, yard debris and recycling services within the city limits. Under the terms of the franchise, rate increases are set by resolution with the approval of the Gladstone City Council. The rates only apply to those who are receiving a service. So tonight I'm gonna have Will and Pam come up and Will has a short PowerPoint to take you through what they are requesting tonight for a rate adjustment.
Well, good evening. Thank you for having us.
Welcome.
Uh, I'm Will Mathias. I'm the CFO for Gladstone Disposal and with me is our owner, Pam Bloom. Uh, so, uh, we, um, Oregon City, uh, excuse me, Gladstone Disposal has been in business since nineteen thirty-five. Have a long-term partnership with the city of Gladstone that we're very proud of. And, uh, we, we appreciate you hearing this, we're hearing this request tonight. Let me see here. So the franchise agreement we have is established by ordinance thirteen eighty-three. And I just wanted to bring up a few highlights because the only way we adjust rates is with the approval of the council. So, um, some of the things that go into that are, um, each year we prepare a financial statement and that financial statement is broken out into the cities we service. And that's reviewed by the county. They have an annual detailed cost reporting, uh, review that they do with, uh, with a city consultant or with a county consultant that reviews the rates, uh, in, in detail. It's a pretty rigorous process. The rate considerations that are called out in the, in the ordinance are, uh, at least the, the big rate considerations are cost, the cost of performing the service, anticipated increase in cost and providing a reasonable operating margin to the hauler. And then also looking at comparable rates of other cities. So the rate adjustment we're proposing tonight is ten percent. And for a residential customer, the cost implication of that, since most residential customers are in a thirty-five gallon container size or less is three dollars and six cents a month. For a commercial customer, most are in a two-yard container size or less. And for a commercial customer, the cost implication would be nineteen dollars and forty-two cents a month or, or less. Uh, some will see more, but most of the commercial customers and residential customers are in these sizes or something smaller. As for the rate comparisons, uh, and I will, I will point, um, specifically to the thirty-five gallon line because most resident, uh, residents are in that size. Gladstone proposed rate for that container size is thirty-three dollars and sixty-six cents. And you'll see that compared to, uh, others on here, it's very favorable. Uh, Oregon City and Canby are the only two that have a slightly lower rate. But in, in the case of Canby, their larger container sizes are, are more expensive. Uh, and Oregon City has the benefit of being just a little closer to the transfer station. So there's some cost savings there when we look at that. Some of the reasons for our increase are, um, we, thirty-three percent of our cost structure is in disposal. And the metro transfer stations have, they've had some increases over the last three or four years. And, uh, you'll see that in, uh, twenty twenty, the rate was ninety-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. And, uh, on July first, the rate went up to a hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty cents. So that, that has been incremental, incrementally increasing over the last few years. And Gladstone has seventy-five hundred tons annually that we take to the metro transfer station. So that, that impact is around a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to our financial statement on just the last two years increases in the disposal rate. And then fuel price, as we all know, that's increased and we have trucks out on the road and, uh, it's, it's expensive. And, uh, in twenty twenty-two, uh, dollar twenty-three a gallon more than the prior year. So it increased and, uh, we have about twenty-eight thousand gallons that we use in, in Gladstone. Fuel price has gone down a little bit this year, but overall, if you look year over year, it's, it, it's, it started off the year high. So it's about flat year over year, uh, this year. And then, uh, recycle markets changed quite a bit. That was And then recycle markets changed quite a bit. That was basically a net new neutral cost impact to us two years ago. And last year, we paid for recycling and to the tune of $41,000 in Gladstone. And then finally, we've all felt a little bit of the pinch of just costs going up in general. And so all of the items we pay for goods and services, parts, you know, any work done to our facility, labor costs, they they've all, we've seen an increase in all of those areas as well. So a- as Jackie said, it's a very short presentation. We just wanted to kind of lay out some of the main things that are driving our our request and for an increase. And so I leave it to you all for any questions you have of us.
One question, you you showed a comparison of different cities and some of the unincorporated areas. But Oregon City and Gladstone are the two that your your company specifically covers. Is that right?
We we service Gladstone, Oregon City, and Clackamas County and the surrounding area.
Okay, so some of the unincorporated county is also under yours. Okay, just wanted to clarify that. Are there questions from councilors?
I'd just like to say, I that's one of the bills I don't pay online. I go there, you have a great representative Esther at the front desk. I love to see her every month. She's awesome and you guys do a great service and I never had one problem in all the years I've had you guys. So this is really not a lot to ask, I don't think. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was just talking to Esther tonight and she she said how wonderful it is to talk with you when you come in. So the feeling is mutual.
Thank you for serving as our ambassador. Castle Cook.
Mostly just a curiosity. So you mentioned that your highest cost component is your disposal rate, which went up by 39%. However, the rate increases that you're proposing are only 10%. So is that 39% offset by other cost components or is that where is that?
No, it's not. But but since the the 39% increase in disposal is only on a third of our our income statement, then it equates to something less than 39% in actual impact.
So it only it's only affecting disposal and not recycling? Is that correct?
So it it we.
Or I see it's offset by other costs.
It's off. It is offset by some other costs. And we didn't, you know, when we requested the 10%, you know, really the only thing, only cost component that we looked forward on as in, and I guess in other words, what we're what we're experiencing this year, we don't want to anticipate that there's going to be a bunch of cost increases this year. So we kind of stick with what's known. And the metro increase is really the one that we knew was going to increase. So that's the only thing we've put into this request that's forward looking.
Cool. Thank you.
Other comments, Councilor Garland.
Okay, there are some people in Gladstone who choose not to have trash service because it is not mandatory. Although in some cities in the state of Oregon, it is mandatory that you pay for garbage service as a homeowner. My question to you is, on here it says yard debris and recycling, which I use both feverishly every week. It's my Sunday night is getting down there and filling up that yard debris can. If someone doesn't have trash service, are they still paying that rate? The the yard debris, if they have a yard debris can and a recycling can, but not a trash can?
We we have a yard debris only or a recycle only rate that and what they are off the top of my head, I wouldn't be able to tell you.
That's okay.
Find it here, but
No, that's okay.
Less than what the total, the total rate is if you have garbage service.
Okay, so the $4.95 that we pay, is that on the recycling? Is that a year or a month? Is that a month? So we're going to add the $4.95 to the 33.66 and then divide out the 73.70 for the year?
So the the, let me pull up my rate sheet here.
Okay, I'm on page 12, four. Oh, you don't have the same page. Sorry.
Well, I do. I did print off the packet.
The yard debris yearly.
So you're
73.70.
Your current
That's what I meant, sorry.
Your current, oh, I I apologize. So
No, that's
Your current rate for yard debris is 67 a year. That is an annual rate.
Yes.
And so the increase would be $6.70 annually for that for that item.
Okay, to go to the 73.70.
Annually, yeah.
So you divide that by 12 and then we that's in addition to the 33.66 you're proposing?
Uh, no.
Okay.
So the only time a resident would pay that annual yard debris rate is if they wanted a second yard debris cart.
So the seven, so I I so in paying the 33.66, I get a yard debris can?
You do. You get a yard debris can debris can, excuse me, and a recycling can as well.
And the recycling.
And glass.
So the only, so those two prices down there at the bottom of attachment number four are only if you're not paying for garbage service.
That's that's correct. Or if you want an additional yard debris
Yard debris cart.
Recycle card.
I'm sold.
So for the typical customer then has the 35 degree or 35 yard gallon blue can plus a yard debris can plus a recycle bin. And the charge that we're talking about tonight covers all three of them.
That's correct.
Okay, just wanted that clear. We're not singling out one part of it. Well, I
Simplify it real quick. You pay $30.60 right now.
Right now.
Next month you'll pay $33.66.
Except you'll pay double that because it bills every two months.
I pay every month.
Oh, you pay every month. Okay. That's why you go in person.
That's right.
Well, I think I I'm glad you're here on the night that we're that we were invited to come to the symposium because what happens at the transfer station does impact the cost to you. And and they are looking at needing to expand and operate more efficiently and more safely and, you know, just better all around. And and that may in the future affect your cost, but I'm glad we're seeing the whole picture tonight. And glad that you're here for it. So we have a business item, a a resolution that has been prepared. Counselors, would someone like to make a motion and then we can discuss the merits of the resolution?
I will make the motion to approve Resolution 1223 amending Exhibit A to Resolution Number 1202 by revising the solid waste rate structure schedule effective September 1st, 2023.
Oh, second?
All right, it has been moved by Council Alexander, seconded by Councilor Huckabee. Council Rieckel, I just now saw your hand up. I will let you be the first one to engage in the discussion.
I just put my hand up, so I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time to ask about this. Perhaps after this part of the discussion would be better, but my family are very avid recyclers and we like to recycle everything that we possibly can. I am curious if there are options offered by Gladstone Disposal for things that you can't typically put in your curbside recycling like styrofoam, plastic film, clam shells, things of that nature. Because we are collecting those things and taking them places and it kind of, you know, it's rough. So I'm curious if there's something like that available and
Yes.
Would you like to tell us what's what's coming up?
Absolutely. So we offer a recycle plus program. In that program, we accept clam shells, textiles, plastic film. We we accept batteries in the glass bin and and then compact fluorescent bulbs as well. So styrofoam is not included in that, but the other items you mentioned are the cost for that service is i- if you have it, if you set it out curbside, that's $9.25 per collection. If you have it at at the door, it's $11.70 per collection. And then you pay a $2.50 per month fee to be enrolled in the service that that pays for the the capital we have invested. And so what we've, we've offered this program for a few short months now. What we've heard from some of our counterparts in Washington County who have offered it for over a year is that most customers will have about six pickups per year. So your cost, if you set it out curbside, would be somewhere in the neighborhood of $85 for the year. We we don't charge it per per year. We charge it the 250 per month and then the 925 per collection. But that's what your total cost on that service would be over the course of a year.
So Mayor Milch, just a point of clarification, since you have a motion, is I think that we should finish Council Rieckel's question after this motion so that it doesn't appear that this recycle plus is also being adopted with the resolution.
That's a good observation and I appreciate that. So let's hold off on on getting the rest of the information about that and and deal with the resolution itself. Are is there deliberation from council members regarding the resolution to make this rate change? All right, hearing none. Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Councilor Cook.
Yes.
Councilor Rieckel.
Yes.
Councilor Alexander.
Yes.
Councilor Huckabee.
Yes.
Councilor Garlington.
Yes.
Council Robert.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, the resolution passes. Seven to zero. So moving back to this other issue, we've just approved a rate change for the typical customer, as I described earlier with the three bins. But you're saying now there is an option to have to opt opt in for additional recycling services expanded over what's normally covered for a monthly fee plus a pickup charge for the months when you do actually put something out.
That's correct.
And it's a purple container.
So with a special container, it can actually be set out on the street for the slightly lower charge then.
That is correct.
All right. Well, good. I think these, you know, families like Council Rieckel's family who are committed to this will appreciate the opportunity to do it with a customer, with a company we already have a close relationship with. Council Rieckel, do you have anything to add?
Yes, another question. You mentioned that the that you can put batteries and bulbs in your glass, like my existing blue glass bin. I could throw that stuff in there right now.
So battery batteries only. The the bulbs would have to be a part of the recycle plus program, but batteries for any household will collect, you can put them in a Ziploc bag in the glass bin. There are specific instructions because you do have to tape certain batteries on both ends. But you put that in your glass bin, we'll pick it up. And that's for any Gladstone disposal customer.
Awesome. Okay, so those instructions are found on the website because I have a pile. I'll throw them in tonight.
Put some tape on them first and put them in the Ziploc.
Yeah, that's what I, yeah.
And just to kind of follow up with Will on this program is there's a lot of opportunity for Gladstone to promote this. And there's a lot of educational tools that Clackamas County Sustainability Department has. And so we're going to launch some videos, newsletter items, a website to try to help people that are very much into recycling, understanding how they can get rid of those hard to recycle items. Specifically, it comes to mind is the the clam shells. That's one that that people just kind of throw into one of those bins. And so we appreciate Council Rieckel's question because the timing to launch recycle plus, it's happened and it's available in Gladstone for those residents that want to choose to opt in to pay for that service.
Thank you. I think what I've read over the years is if everyone was 100% clear on what is and isn't recyclable and only putting things that really are appropriate for recycle, the cost would go way down. But because we're unsure and some people just throw it in, if it's got a little triangle on the bottom, they think, oh, I can recycle this because the manufacturer says I can. That's not always the case. So we appreciate the communication effort, the, you know, the education effort that comes. And we're glad you're here tonight because this is a good first step for us to learn more and to and to be better customers for you. So
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right.
Sorry, one more thing. Father, I'm so sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm kind of obsessed with this, but I Gladstone Disposal website and the instructions for the batteries are right on the homepage if anybody watching needs to know.
Very good. Thank you for that quick, for that quick follow up. Okay, so those instructions are there. Thanks a lot.
Yes, thank you very much.
All right, our YouTube license prohibits us from playing copyrighted music. I was going to bring a recording of the chicken dance for this next item on our agenda, but we would not be able to post our meeting video. So I have not done that. I've restrained myself. Chief Schmober, you have our next item.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, City Council. Tonight I'd ask you to consider approval of an ordinance 1523, excuse me, 1523, an ordinance amending Gladstone Municipal Code, Chapter 6.08, to include subsection 2 of the GMC. Roosters are not allowed to be kept, possessed, maintained, or harbored within the city. Included for consideration are also amendments to language in subsection 6.08.020, 6.08.030, and 6.08.070 for clarity purposes only. Little bit of history, Chapter 6.8, animals does not include the keeping, maintaining, possessing, or harboring of roosters within the current ordinance. The current animal permit application, however, highlights roosters are prohibited in red. Making it clear, a resident in the city of Gladstone cannot obtain a permit for keeping roosters. Adding language to Chapter 6.08 prohibiting roosters would bring clarity, consistency, and fall within the current line of of city practice that we're what we're proceeding with now. So in included in the package is an ordinance which track changes. After working with the city attorney, we added subsection 2 of 6.08.010 as shown in the track changes draft of the chapter. This would meet the required needs prohibiting roosters within the city, add clarity to the ordinance, and fall within the current city practice. And the strike through is an underliner. You have copies with and along with a clean copy. So again, the staff recommendation is to add this to fall in line with our current practices.
And Judge Jacob, City Attorney, you're here tonight. I, you know, as as John said, you were involved in the preparation of this. Any concerns, anything to add? Have we made this now a little clearer and more consistent to your mind?
Yeah, absolutely, Mayor. Thank you, Chad Jacobs from the City Attorney's Office. Yeah, the as as Chief Schmober mentioned, the intent of this is really just to clarify and codify existing city practices. It's not really changing anything substantively. And we just want to make sure that the law is abundantly clear in case we have to enforce it. So, you know, I would also recommend approval of this ordinance tonight.
All right, city councilors, any questions or comments? All right, I will accept a motion then. Bottom of 13, one.
I will make the motion to approve Ordinance 1523, an ordinance amending GMC Chapter 6.08 to include subsection 2 of GMC 6.08.018. Roosters are not allowed to be kept, possessed, maintained, or harbored within the city and to amend subsection 6.08.020, 6.08.030, and 6.08.070 to make the language clearer.
Is there a second? All right, it's been moved by Council Robert, seconded by Council Rieckel. If we adopt this unanimously, this is the last time that will have to be read. Thank you, Council Roberts, for reading it for us. Any further discussion? Tammy, will you, oh, Council Cook?
Oh, my God, I can't believe, I just have to state we're we're making roosters a cockadoodle. Don't. With this resolution.
All right. Jackie's always concerned when we have a relatively short agenda, we talk and make jokes and all the rest and keeps us here for too long. So that'll be the last one of those we'll do. All right, Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Council Cook.
Yes.
Council Rieckel.
Yes.
Council Alexander.
Yes.
Council Huckabee.
Yes.
Council Robert.
Yes.
Council Garlington.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, the ordinance has passed unanimously. Roosters are a cockadoodle don't in Gladstone. And thank you to staff for helping us with that. Next item is an appointment to the Audit Committee. The City Administrator, Beth.
Thank you, Mayor. So the timing of this application is perfect because our auditors will start the internal work next week on fiscal year ending 2022, 2023. So we expect in the next couple of months of convening our audit committee. You have one applicant in your pack.
You have one applicant in your packet. We actually have three vacant terms. One term expires 12/31/2023, and there's two terms that expire 12/31/2024. I would suggest that you go for the 2024 term tonight and lock that person in. Suzanne Bach, her application is in your packet along with her resume. And since you only have one applicant, I think that you could do a motion and a vote.
All right, would someone like to make a motion on this one?
I'm inclined to move that we appoint Suzanne Bach to the term that expires 12/31/2024 for the Audit Committee of the City of Gladstone.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved by Counsel Roberts, seconded by Counsel Huckabee. Suzanne Bach, are you here tonight? Hello, welcome. All right. Any other discussion, comments? We believe these, so we will continue to accept applications then because the work is going to be starting soon for the other two positions if we make an appointment.
That's correct. We're still advertising for to fill vacancies.
Very good. All right.
I'd just like to say I'm very happy that you applied for this. I mean, any other position, they'd probably say you're overqualified, so I'm
All right, Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Rieckel.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes. Suzanne Bach is appointed to the position. Thank you, Suzanne. Last item is a review of the final draft of the Gladstone City Council Rules. We've had a couple of work sessions and council sessions to or work sessions so far to work on this. Staff, go ahead.
Yes, when the mayor told me he wanted to do the chicken dance at this meeting because it was a light agenda, I said, Chad, can we please put the City Council Rules in the packet to have a very healthy conversation? But yes, thank you, Chad, for making the proposed amendments. What you have in your packet is a complete amended version of the City Council Rules from the previous work that you have done. Chad and I are available. If you want to make any proposed changes, we do that tonight. And then we would bring a resolution back to you in September to actually adopt and amending the City Council Rules.
All right, Counselor Garlington, you had mentioned to me earlier, there are a couple of little things that you had noticed. Did you want to bring them up tonight? Are you satisfied with things having having given it some thought?
I have a couple of small things that I've we've everybody's been kind of talking down the table about little things that are in here that we need to go about. But I have one addition that I'm not sure how it needs to be worded. I would like for it to go in council member conduct. I feel that in the last five, six elections that I have been either a part of or just noticing more that one of the things that happens with counselors is the verbiage that they use to identify themselves in different areas, whether it be written up in a newspaper, speaking to the public, putting their name as an endorsement to an elected official and or an item being elected on and anyway, that. There's two words that that come to me. So what this is what I had written down, Chad, I'm not sure I
And excuse me, just to interrupt, you want to point this to a section so we can be
I want to add this to council member conduct.
Which is section, oh, section G.
Fifteen.
Fifteen eight, section G, okay.
So what I had was council members using their name in writing should note a count, a, one, a counselor is an individual. Two, a council is the entire body. That is not speaking to anyone specific on this. I had spoken with Mayor Milch over on this and I said, I feel a lot like it was, we're coming back to when we discussed the administrators part on our council rules on the on on that and not making it seem like administrator bets to these rules rather than a whole change. And I feel like this change is important because it gets wrong so many times in writing. When referred to ourselves as a council, we individually as individuals are not a council, we are counselors. So I know it needs to be a discussion. It was, other than a few little things in here, the other things that I had seen, that would be my only addition that I would like to discuss.
Okay, and let me provide a little more clarification on that because we had discussed it and I looked. What Counsel Garlington is referring to is that very often in the voter pamphlet that comes out at the time of an election, maybe a serving city councillor or mayor will make an endorsement of a candidate. And to do that, we fill out a form that includes our name and sometimes gives us an option of exactly how we'd like to be listed on their, in their publicity or their voter pamphlet statement. Very often, someone will be listed as Greg Alexander, comma, Gladstone City Council. Because he is a member of the Gladstone City Council, but by not by, but rather than saying Gladstone City Councillor Greg Alexander, the implication could be to some people that the word city council at the end of his name meant that the entire city council, including Greg Alexander, was endorsing a candidate. It's confusing. It's often left to the candidate themselves whether or how they put that. And I looked through our last voter pamphlet statement for May, this most recent May election that included school board elections throughout Clackamas County. And there's a great inconsistency in how candidates choose to name and list the name of people who endorse them. I think the best way and the way to avoid the confusion that Counselor Garlington is referring to would be always to list persons by their title first. So Gladstone Councillor Greg Alexander, Gladstone Mayor Michael Milch, Gladstone School Board Member Stacy Moncrief, that kind of a name list makes it clear you're talking about one individual and not the whole council or an endorsement by the council. And and that's what you want to get after. And this also comes up then also just in news articles where sometimes mayors in particular work as a consortium trying to work with other mayors, representing things that are representing positions on issues that affect the community. It's not always things that we take a vote on as a council to represent the city view. But there is strength in representation from people who have been elected mayor on some issues that are statewide issues or local issues. So what Counselor Garlington is asking is that we provide some clarification to city council members as to how their names, to the extent that they are allowed to do it, how they put their names out there in public. And and Chad, since you've helped us to draft this language and this is a totally new thing, it kind of fits in with the the basic idea that if a council member appears before another government agency to give a statement, whether the statement reflects personal opinion or is the official position of the city council, it's consistent with that rule that we have. Do you have some thoughts? And we're just kind of throwing this out to you unprepared. But about have other cities done something like this to clarify titles used in public statements? Have you seen language that might be helpful to us in this regard?
Mayor, Council, again, Chad Jacobs from the City Attorney's Office. I am not familiar with any other city imposing such a rule. I don't think that drafting language for such a rule would be that difficult. Just sort of listening to you and Counsel Garlington speak, I think simply adding a number two to section G and moving center down to number three and explaining that when an elected official is representing themselves in writing, that they should identify themselves in whatever manner you all decide, whether that's, you know, putting their title first or whether that's saying, you know, counselor instead of council, you know, however you all decide. We could certainly add a requirement in a new section G two to do that. So it's it's really just becomes a policy decision first, whether you want to do that. And then second, if you do, what direction you want to give. The only thing that I would add to that is working in some flexibility there because you don't want to create these rules as sort of like a gotcha situation, you know, so someone slightly messes up by, you know, saying their position after their name, for example, instead of before their name. You know, that you don't want that to be the the situation where they're violating the council rules instead of just making sure that it is very clear that they are speaking as an individual person as opposed to on behalf of the entity, which is the council.
All right, Counsel Garlington, do you have a response to that?
I think it's awesome. I, again, it does not reflect anything on this particular council as we are sitting. It's just something I've seen over the last six or seven years that I think needs to be clarified. And, you know, as new counselors come in through the next years that it's written and it's and it's there. I I just think it's important to understand the expectation.
And and my suggestion to you, as we talked about, just the two of us, was that perhaps Tammy Bandit could also include it in some of the information that she provides to to council members at election time. Because it goes along with some of the other things that we need to be aware of as to what is appropriate and not appropriate for our role during citywide elections or or regional elections.
Right.
So we could put it there as well, you know, pull it out of this rule and say, here's a reminder of a rule that the council has. So I appreciate you pointing to a section because now we can try to generate some language. And Chad has made a good, you know, suggestions about how it fits in. And also I want to underscore what you said. This is not a Gladstone problem. As I looked at that voter pamphlet, I looked at elections in Canby and Oregon City and Westland and everywhere else. It's very inconsistent from one to the other, and it's very inconsistent even among candidates for the same particular office. It's just how they list people. And if we can sort of encourage them to use on an endorsement form, for example, the option which allows us to very clearly state the one and only way that we want our name listed. That's better than the option that just gives us a name and said, you listed however you want. That's a better way. Counsel Rieckel, did you have an additional comment about this?
I was just going to say that I I was in support of this clarification. I think that will be helpful to any of us going forward. So I think it's a great idea.
Okay, other councils, Counsel Huckabee?
I just want to reinforce what Chad said as, you know, this isn't supposed to be a gotcha moment. I know that some counselors up here did endorse people and they wrote Gladstone City Councillor. And candidates put it in the voter pamphlet statement how they chose. So and some of us were asked about it multiple times. So I do feel like it's kind of a gotcha moment. But I just want to make sure that's not happening going forward because we can only control what we write down. Oh, we have no control over what the candidate puts or wherever, you know. And we might put our title, you know, you're saying put the title at the beginning. We could put it at the beginning and they'll still put it at the end because they don't understand the importance of it to us. So as long as like, yeah, it's not a, hey, you didn't do this when it was done correctly.
Also, I believe that the form, when you fill the form out to submit, like it asks for your name and then your title or position. So it also sometimes could be at the discretion of the county when they print. So there is that too, but just, I guess, maybe not not a gotcha moment, but be highly aware of what you write.
Well, I think I think Counselor Garlington was really suggesting, you know, this as guidance. And if if we can follow the guidance consistently and if the candidates we endorse follow our guidance, then it will remove some of the confusion that some people have saw on this issue. So thank
And I think, Mayor, that you had a great idea and we can be an example to other cities because you've seen it in other things, right? That Mayor Michael Milch, Counselor Greg Alexander, you can't mess up, I think, if you put it first.
Yeah.
You know, they can't say, City Council Greg Alexander, City Counselor. See, so I think first is a good way to have that in there too.
Okay.
So Mayor, just drafting some language going off of what Chad said, if we added a new section two, we could say when elected official is representing themselves as an individual, they will, to the extent reasonably possible, use their title first before their name. Language like that, I think, Chad, and I can work on including in that section.
All right, I appreciate your your work on drafting that. I think I think that sounds like something along that line sounds reasonable.
I'm just curious, is anyone, has anyone been confused by this? Like if if my personal opinion, looking at the voter's guide, you know, if you have a candidate statement and then at the bottom, there's multiple names listed. You know, John Smith, comma, City Councillor. Does that, has anyone been confused by that? I'll be I'll be honest, it seems like a solution and one of a problem.
No, a city councillor came to me because another city councillor endorsed a candidate and it had the councillor's name, comma, Gladstone City Council. And a citizen approached them and said, well, I saw the Gladstone City Council was endorsing that candidate. You're on the council. You're endorsing that person. And the candidate and and the councillor said, I don't even know that person. I didn't endorse them. That was another councillor. But but they put the word council after the name and they thought it meant the whole council.
So it is, we are here.
Yeah, we we have heard from people who who see it differently, so.
Excellent, thank you.
All right. Now, first of all, I want to say thank you to Chad and all the staff who worked at providing us with a markup of the changes that we, you know, proposed making. Are there other comments or concerns about any of what we have on here?
Yes.
I'd like to turn to where you finished.
No, but that's okay.
What we're talking about.
No, you go.
I'd like to turn to page 15-10, J two. Reading that second sentence, it just trails off and doesn't follow anywhere. It was upon receipt of the minutes in the city, in the council agenda packet. And then it has no further link.
Oh, yes, we have a first half, an introductory clause there and nothing to.
I think that that can just be removed. Yeah. Right, this was a highly debated conversation. And so if it was remembered differently than sorry, trailed off there, but I think that we can just remove that first half of a sentence.
All right, are we in agreement on that, that we should redline the first half of that second sentence? Or well. J number two, upon receipt of the minutes in the council agenda packet. That's not enough to be a sentence, but the rest of it was deleted, so we should delete the first half too.
Just because we ruled that it wasn't necessary, we make agenda additions or corrections prior to a meeting.
I think that was just a typo. When I deleted everything else, my cursor did go all the way over.
Perfect. I figured something like that. Thank you, Chad.
Yeah, no, thank you for noticing it.
Okay, I'd like to go back to 15-3.
15-3, all right.
On number 15-3, number eight there, we took out the word Oregon. So we left in state law. Does that state law need to be preceded by Oregon state law? Or can we just simply say state law and assume it's Oregon?
I'm sorry, Counsel Garlington, where are
Okay, so it says, I'm I'm not number, let's see, where am I at? C eight. Telephone electronic meetings shall be held in compliance with state law. But should it say Oregon state law? It's up to you. I'm just asking.
So since we are in Oregon, when we say state, it means Oregon, but we could certainly change it to Oregon law if you all prefer it. That's it's really makes a difference. No preference.
No preference. Okay, now I'm going to move to 15-13. To R 1A. And we looked up the, I thought it read a little bit funny, so we looked up the rule. And I'm thinking it should read pursuant to section eight of the Charter, comma, the mayor takeout shall Um, and I'm thinking it should read pursuant to section eight of the charter, comma, the mayor takeout shall appoints mem, appoints plural, members plural of council committees, which are established by these rules. And that's really close to what the charter reads. And that was all I had.
Uh, we had a former counselor that, um, uh, always called attention to the, the choice of the word shall or will in language like this. Um, is this a, a time when shall language is, um, is important? Or, uh, if we had that sentence, just read the mayor appoints members of council committees and so on, uh, would that be adequate?
Subsequently then, Mayor, does that open us up to the same sort of interpretation that we have with the appointment to, uh, city commissions and councils and whatnot? Like our audit and budget committee? Because I think the language read, or maybe it still reads that the mayor would make those appointments. But as of this year, we've been doing that by council consensus.
Only ad hoc, I think.
Um, on section two, the next page, it says, the mayor and city council will by majority vote, appoint individuals to vacant positions. So for city commissions, boards and committees, it's the mayor and council by vote, who make the appointments for council committees. If I decided I wanted to have a committee to work on preparation of council rules and appointed three of you to do it, uh, that would be a different, uh, process. That would be my appointment to make.
Okay.
So this, that draws the distinction there.
While we're, uh, on page fifteen dash fourteen, um, if we're looking at citizen appointment of committees, um, section D, um, I think some context was lost or there seems to be a substantive change that I don't think we discussed.
I'm sorry, Councilor, can we just back up one quick second? Before we move on to that one, I just want to make sure that we got the last changes clear.
Yes, I'll, I'll wait.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. So for, uh, one A, we're gonna say pursuant to section eight of the charter, the mayor appoints members of council committees, which are established by these rules.
Yes.
Okay.
That's almost exactly the language that's in the charter. So there's no, uh.
Do we need to change it on subsection C then? The council shall consult with the city administrator?
Are you wanting will?
I'm, I'm right under you. You were on A, I'm on C, right below.
Um, I don't think that language is a reference to the charter. So this is our choice of, of language here. And I like that rule. Um, that's consistent with our rules of not putting too much on staff. Uh, if we kept creating a lot of committees, staff could be overloaded. So I like, I like that rule in there. And I think, yeah, I think the word, the wording is good. Okay, Councilor Cook, you had a comment on page fifteen, fourteen, is that right?
Yeah, page fifteen, fourteen, um, under citizen appointment, section D. Um, so, uh, the, it seems like the last sentence, um, that speaks to, um, the budget committee. I think that sentence was originally the second sentence in this paragraph. Um, and I think striking it through changes policy in a way that I don't think we've previously discussed. Um, so it reads, an individual may not serve on more than two city commissions, boards or committees simultaneously in order to encourage the broadest possible involvement. I think prior than the, the sentence followed, this limitation does not apply to service on the city budget committee. Is that a change that we want to make? Um, I, I just, I, maybe I don't, I don't believe I'm not recalling it, but, um, I don't think we had discussed changing that policy so that, um, citizens can no longer serve on three committees as long as one of them is budget.
So Chad, is it your recollection that we did take out that language that referenced the, uh, ability of someone to serve on the budget committee, uh, in addition to other committees?
Yeah, during the last meeting, Mayor, you may recall that you brought up the fact, um, with Pleniputary Commissioner Smith and his desire to serve on the budget committee and the issue that we had because of the limitations in state law. And you asked to make sure that the language and the rules were clarified to address that situation. And so that's where this language comes from. And the language that about appointed members of the budget committee may not be officers, agents or employees of the city. That's just the exact language taken from state law. So that is already a legal requirement in state law. And that was meant to just clarify that state law does apply. Um, and you know, there's always been a question about what the struck out language, which said this limitation does not apply to service on the budget committee really meant. Presumably it was meant to conform with state law, saying that you don't get to serve on more than one committee. Um, but the way it sort of read makes it sound like you could serve on three committees. And we in fact had that as a practice on several occasions. And so this latest go around, when, uh, Commissioner Smith requested serve on the budget committee, and it raised some red flags about whether that violated state law.
Uh, but Chad, I, I thought the issue with Commissioner Smith was that he was a planning commissioner. And I thought that you would, uh, informed us that there were some new state rules that limited the ability of a planning commissioner to serve in more than one capacity. Uh, and am I misremembering that?
Yeah. So it's really about the budget committee. And the, the state budget law has that language that's now proposed in your rules that precludes, um, appointed members of the budget committee. So not you all as city counselors, as you may recall, the budget committee is made up of the equal number of the city council and appointed members from the community. And so the basic idea is that if you are already a officer, agent or employee of the city, that you cannot serve as, as an appointed member of the budget committee. So the question becomes, for example, with a planning commissioner, are they an officer of the city? So therefore.
Ah, okay, okay.
We ran into with Commissioner Smith.
Now I see the connection. Okay. And, uh, would a member of the parks board be considered an officer of the city? Uh?
We, we can certainly take a look at it there. There's different standards to determine whether a position is deemed an officer or not. And we can certainly give you all advice on that. Um, you know, there are different positions which are considered officers and those that are not. With planning commissioners, we were pretty confident that, you know, the state would deem those officer positions for the purposes of the state budget law.
Okay. I think currently we don't have anyone serving on three committees, budget committee plus two more. So if we make this our rule going forward, um, we will not be kicking anybody off of anything or, or disqualifying anybody who's already serving. Uh, so are you okay with, with keeping it this way? It means, uh, an additional amount of recruiting. Sometimes we let people serve on budget who were already serving on something else because we had a hard time getting people to do it.
Yeah.
But, um.
Uh, so my, my personal opinion is I think we should remove every barrier possible to allow folks to serve the community. If you look on our website at the vacancies that we have on our boards committees, it's unfortunate. Um, so I, I think whenever possible, we should remove barriers to participation. Um, but I hear what Attorney Jacobs is saying around, um, a potential conflict of interest there with state law. Um, so i- if that makes it simpler to execute, then I think that's, that's fair.
All right. Um, I just wanted to add on this very same paragraph. I appreciate, uh, that you substitute the word individual rather than, uh, citizen. Um, uh, in, in city work, we talk about citizens as just residents of the city. Uh, a citizen is the denizen of the city. But the word citizen is also used in other contexts to ma- make a distinction between people who are citizens of the United States, people who are not citizens of the United States. And I don't want the word to be used in such a way where there may be some confusion over which meeting is applies. Uh, so I like, uh, that you've substituted just the word individual here. Um, the, the title of this section, um, uh, has the word citizen in it. Uh, we may come up with a different way. Um, we could just remove the citizen, call it appointment and removal, because that's really what it's about. Uh, or committee appointment and removal or something else. All right. Are there other comments, concerns, um, corrections to what we see? I did have a, a conversation with the city administrator who indicated she was happy with the language that has been developed regarding the process of evaluation. Do you want to confirm that? So.
Yes, I will confirm that.
All right. So that is the one section that, uh, you know, it's, it's an obligation that we have to do something in conjunction with you. Uh, and, uh, and if you're happy with this language, uh, then that's one less barrier to our being able to approve it. So.
I would also, I would just like to, uh, thank Chad for cleaning up, um, on page fifteen, eleven. I guess that would be L four A. Um, it just includes a, a larger portion of people's families and I appreciate that. Thank you for doing that and making it as clear as you did.
All right, we've, we've suggested a couple slight changes. Uh, and we've had some drafted language for a more substantial change to an item that wasn't in here before. Um, are we ready to send this on for preparation of a draft then?
Yes.
All right.
I believe.
I, I see people nodding their heads. We're not going to approve anything tonight. We're just, uh, having, having reviewed our previous reviews, we're ready to send it on for a draft that would be in the form of a resolution. All right. Um, uh, did someone want to make, uh, well, I think we'll just do that by consensus. I mean, I mean, seeing heads nod, so I'm going to instruct staff to, uh, prepare then a, um, a final version of this incorporating the changes that we have gone over in work sessions. And then that will be our action item at a future meeting. Okay, that was the last main agenda item. Any business carried forward?
I have nothing. Thank you.
All right. Uh, are there any, has anyone signed up for business from the audience?
We have not received any, no.
Okay. Uh, has anyone given you a card tonight?
No.
Okay. All right. Business from the council? Um, let's see, we'll start in the middle and work our way out. So Councilor Riechel, I will start with you.
Um, I have nothing because the parks meeting has been moved to next week. So nothing from the parks board. Um, but yes, just a general thank you to the Rotary and the city for such an awesome community festival. It was, it was a lot of fun. The parade was great. My son enjoyed, well, my whole family enjoyed the, the parade and the, and the whole community festival. It was a blast. So thank you for everyone's hard work. And that's it.
Thank you, Councilor Riechel. Councilor Cook?
Yeah, so, uh, I had a wonderful meeting with, um, Administrator Betts and, uh, our new economic development, um, Representative Marcy Jory. Um, I'm really excited that, uh, both Jackie and Marcy are working on a business social hour, which is a really first of its kind, um, project that the city is going to be working on bringing business owners throughout Gladstone together to build positive relationships and engagement. Um, you know, it's been a tough couple of years, you know, COVID and 2020, there's a lot going on, a lot of challenges that the business community faced. And, um, I think one takeaway that all of us had was that there was an opportunity to build, um, positive constructive relationships, um, between business owners and with the business owners in the city. Um, so that when challenges arise, we have those relationships to lean on and that we trust each other and that we can communicate well and, um, have that, that structure in place. So really excited to see that going. Um, we had a couple other economic development projects that Marcy's working on and gosh, like the momentum. Um, you can just kind of see us turning the corner a little bit with our support of, uh, local business. And it's really exciting to get to witness and be a little bit of a part of. So thank you, Jackie and Marcy for your work there. It's really exciting.
Thank you, Councilor Cook. Councilor Alexander?
Hey, I'd just like to say that you got about a month, a little more than a month to get out and sign up for the, um, Gladstone Police Academy. It's gonna start. I think everyone, citizens and everybody should get into that and, and get to see the procedures and, and what our officers have to go through and then sign up for a ride along. And, um, also, and then, and just enjoy your break. We won't see each other till, uh, September now. So, thank you.
Councilor Roberts?
Well, uh, same thing as most others have said, you know, thank you to Bryce and Bob and everyone else from the Rotary and what the city does with that. The community festival was fantastic and it was exciting to walk around and just see what great engagement that brought from people you know are residents of the city, but also people you recognize from outside the city. So, you know, it was a really great opportunity to bring people together. So thank you for everyone. Um, outside of that, I have nothing else.
Councilor Huckabee?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just a couple of updates on the exciting momentum at the Gladstone Community Center. Um, so I'm not sure if everybody's aware, but we had, um, purchased a new van to transport to, um, field trips, for lack of a better word. Um, and it's very dark and there's not much color to it right now. Um, but they are looking at three different rap styles, um, coming up in mid-August. So it'll be bright and noticeable and fun. So that's exciting. Um, there's been a lot of, um, updates to the, the building itself at the community center that are fun and everybody should go check out. Um, one of those is a mural outside of, um, the center on the Abernathy side of the building. Um, and also we have a postcard type mural on the side of Cookie Pots, which is Portland and Dartmouth. So I encourage everybody to go stand in front of the murals and tag the city or the center or the business, if that's what you want to tag. Um, and then lastly, just reminder, Friday night, music on the green, six o'clock. It's free.
Councilor Garland?
Six o'clock. Um, so I, the festival was fabulous. I'm sure that Bryce Colson and Dr. Bob are still sleeping. There's just no doubt in my mind that that's where they're at tonight. Um, I went down to throw my five dollars in at the dunk tank. Chief Schmerber saw me, he ran, I didn't get, I get my chance, maybe next year. And it was a fun time. I think everybody had a great time. I talked to a lot of people. I kind of hung around the city area a little bit, um, and stayed in the Friends of Gladstone Nature Park booth a lot with, uh, Nancy and the people that we met, although close, I mean, within Clackamas County mostly. It was really good to Oregon City and Canby people, and they had their own festival going on this weekend. So that same weekend. So that was really exciting. I was, the, the diversity of people was really great. Uh, we, uh, we went to the Metro Mixer on Thursday. We met some really great connections, uh, you know, you, uh, I, I just get really excited when we can get people who want to come and see Gladstone and the great things that we have to do at our parks and, uh, the great things that are going on in our city and what individuals are doing to make our city a better place. The Seventh Day Adventist people were, uh, prime example of what a group of people can come together and accomplish in a very small amount of time with a really big impact, because it just makes us look a lot better. Um, though I went to the library meeting, they are really gearing up towards, uh, our library a lot. Um, you know, they want to get the books purchased, uh, so that we've got latest and greatest. They're doing a lot of, um, going through the library books and cleaning up and what's going and what's not. So it, and I know that building is not built yet, but it takes a lot of interior work from the old library and what they've got to not, you know, as you well know, it's kind of like packing up and moving your house. So it's really exciting to see the excitement that the Clackamas County Library Board has for our library opening and the exciting things that are going on with the Concord property. It is slow still a little bit, but it's moving forward. And it's, it's, it's just a great group of people to be with and see their excitement, momentum. And I think all of the people that have worked on that for so long, I, I just can't thank all of those people enough. And we don't gather here until after school starts. So I'm just gonna say my public service announcement. When a school bus stops and the arm gets put out, that doesn't mean, gee, I wonder if there's kids getting on that bus. That means stop. There's just no question about it. You stop. You see a child, just stop. It takes a second. You're not going to be late for work, I promise. Watch out for those little guys. They are, they are our future. So everybody else, have a great month.
I'll go back to councillor Alexander.
I just forgot, so Saturday after the parade, I went up to the college and took the tour and did that, and the pictures don't do it justice, they're so beautiful and all the things they put in up there. So if you get a chance to go up there, there, almost anyone will show you around, students, anybody, it was fun.
You sort of stole my thunder, Greg, I was gonna, I was gonna say. Saturday was one of those days, I've, I've commented on this, you know, in Oregon when we have bad weather a lot of the year and you can't get out and do things, the summer months, the weekends become, you know, very competitive as far as events. There were about four different things I wanted to do this last Saturday. And I went in the parade, ran out of candy halfway through, so I thought that's a good excuse to go back and sit with my wife and saw the saw the end of the parade, but I, which I would never see because I'm in the front of the parade. And it gave me time to show up to an event I had signed up for, we're all doing kind of individual homework and work on, on the issue of diversity, equity and inclusion. And I attended a workshop at the Oak Grove United Methodist Church led by a woman named Debbie Irving, who woke, who wrote this book called Waking Up White. I'll hold it up to the camera, it's obviously not going to be seen. But it was, it was a good session. And Debbie Irving flew all the way out from Massachusetts, caught COVID and had to do it by Zoom from a hotel room in Portland. So the event that was supposed to go until three o'clock ended at about one thirty, which gave me time to drive up to Clackamas Community College, which was the third thing on my list that, for that day. And see that tour and what councillor Alexander said, this is absolutely true, these are wonderful buildings, the welcome center, you, it just has everything for everybody. So welcoming and so designed to meet so many different needs, it's, it's great. So young people in your families or in your acquaintance, this is a great educational setting for our community. And while I was there, at one of the tables, I met someone from the Clackamas River Basin Council who had done a continuation of that project at Cross Park that very morning, which was the fourth thing that I was not able to do. She did say they didn't have as many volunteers as they had in the past, probably because of the proximity to the festival. But at least I was able to thank her for doing that work in our community on our behalf. An observation I'll make about the weekend and the festival. We have parks as one of our goals for the year, they're very important to our community to have this outdoor green space. But a community festival like this shows us that an outdoor park facility can transform itself into the kind of place where you see the things that are usually you expect on a street. Dining, entertainment. But just, you know, community connection. It all happens in the park and it never stopped being a park because children were enjoying, enjoying it as a park at the same time. And then Sunday morning with the car show is when our streets get transformed into the kind of place where you can walk and connect with others because there are no moving vehicles or very few until they finally all arrived. You know, and, and so what we're seeing on Portland Avenue to me is very exciting. Councillor Cook talked about our economic development and, and businesses working together. But part of what's happened just in the last few years, City Hall has moved from Dartmouth Street to this north end of, of Portland Avenue. We have property at the very south end of Portland Avenue where the owner is coming to us and looking for possible changes and maybe that's going to be developed. We have businesses that were in one part of Portland Avenue moving to a different part, which just sort of stretches the whole thing. The, the growth of the community center, the expansion of its programs. Even this building right next door to us, the, it, there may, there's talk of, of some development there, so. And to the other side of us, we have the Public Works Facility, which is going to be undergoing a, you know, a facelift as well. Portland Avenue is going to be a really happening place. And it's exciting to see that and the longer we stretch it out, the less concern people will have about parking, because they'll be able to park anywhere and walk up and down and find a wide assortment of things to do and engage in. That would be very good for this community. So this emphasis on economic development and the great staff person we chose and met tonight, I think are doing a lot for this city. And, and I'm excited that we, we have this, this this momentum going, as you put it, I think. It's really good for all of us. I want to thank staff for the hard work in putting together reports and presentations for tonight to enable us to, to to do our work. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved by councillor Alexander, seconded by councillor Huckabee, Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Councillor Huckabee. Yes. Councillor Alexander.
Yes.
Councillor Riekel.
Yes.
Councillor Cook.
Yes.
Councillor Roberts.
Yes.
Councillor Garlington.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, meeting adjourned at eight twenty-six.